I want to welcome you to the four o'clock work session of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for August 5th, 2014. We have three items on the agenda today, but the first item up will be a special guest that we have from the Kentucky League of Cities. Tyler Campbell is the Government Relations Coordinator. And Tyler, we invite you to come up and provide the information you brought to us today.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Literally, I just came down just to briefly talk with you all. This is the time of year where our legislative team are post-session, so we go and visit various cities throughout the Commonwealth. We perform legislative wrap-ups and talk about the session. But we also do what we call KLC city visits, where we come down and literally talk to the mayors and get to know the commissioners and just have an opportunity to talk to you folks in a close-knit environment. So I called Mayor Wilkerson a few weeks ago and said, "It's time for us to come down to Bowling Green. I would love to have an opportunity to address your counsel." And so that's why I'm here, literally to thank you all. We had a very successful session in 2014, off the heels of a very successful session in 2013 where we passed Senate Bill 2 with pension, the historic pension reform legislation. 2014 was very successful for the Kentucky League of Cities as well. So you can see, I provided Ashley a couple of copies of our legislative update that's at your, should be at your workstation, and also a guide of our House Bill 331, which was probably our, one of our most significant pieces of legislation passed during the 2014 session to talk about city classification reform. A lot of you are probably aware that the classification reform bill or city classification in Kentucky's been pretty antiquated for some time, having six classes of cities. House Bill 331 restructured and put a new structure in place going forward where you only have two classes of cities now in Kentucky. I won't go into a lot of detail about that. That's there for you. I literally brought that just for you to peruse and to take a look at. But I wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for your support during this past session, to thank Mayor Wilkerson as well. Throughout the session, we may call and ask our city officials, our mayors who work on our, work on our board and serve with us, to contact their state legislators on a variety of issues. And we did that a lot this last session on a, on a number of KLC initiatives that were on our legislative agenda. And I'm happy to report that we did have 12 KLC legislative initiatives that was put on our agenda by our Board of Directors that passed this last session. So that would not be possible without the work of our cities, our member cities, the 365 member cities throughout the state, and the opportunity that you all give to us to represent you in Frankfurt and your ability to weigh in when we ask you to. We can never, we always say we can never underestimate the value of a constituent vote. And so we really appreciate when you all do weigh in, when we send out those action alerts on items of public policy that can positively or even negatively impact cities. Sometimes what, one of the most important things to remember is it's not always what passes, but what doesn't pass that can impact communities. So I wanted to take the opportunity to come down here on behalf of KLC and our organization to thank Mayor Wilkerson and thank you, the City Commission, for your willingness to allow us to represent you in Frankfurt, but your willingness to also call those state legislators when we need you to and to help us weigh in on important public policy debates. And that's what I wanted to come here today and just take that opportunity to thank you all. And while I'm here, since my good friend Gene Harmon's in the, in the audience too, I wanted to thank him. He took a lot of time over the last few months to answer some questions for me, weighed in on a couple of public policy issues that I asked of him, dealing with local model procurement code and some things we're looking at to do in the upcoming session. So since he's here, I wanted to thank him because he's a wealth of knowledge. You all probably know that, but I really appreciate Gene and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank him while I saw him here in the audience. So with that, I'll be seated and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Does anybody have any questions or comments from Mr. Campbell? I know it's been a long drive for you, but thank you for coming down today. All right, the next item, Mr. Fibo proposed revisions on right-of-way excavation permits.
As the Commission has mentioned to me today, would like for our Public Works Department to continue to improve its permit process and program. Jeff Flashley is here today to make some recommendations to you concerning that permit program, as well as to handle any questions that you may have. Jeff, I think he has a PowerPoint to go along with his comments.
Okay, Mayor. Fisher, as I appreciate this opportunity to get to talk about this. This is an item that's important to us as a department, as well as the Motors of Bowling And starting out, a little bit of background information. This is a program, our right-of-way excavation permitting is a program that we have made tweaks over time. Last time we did that was in 2012. And I'll talk a little bit about some of those changes that we made at that time. But again, we like to pride ourselves and we like to take a back step and look and see if there's things that we can do better. And after doing that with this program, we believe we've identified several items that we could do to improve. And some of these are common sense and I think will make a big difference to the Motors. And I'd like, so I want to provide you that information, but also, as Mr. Fibo had said, to have some opportunity for questions and comments and discussion at the end. Infrastructure facts, there's 278 centerline miles of road within city limits and city jurisdiction that we maintain. So that includes paving, striping, signs, drainage related to that 278 miles. If you look at what this cost over the historic values, this is an inflation-adjusted. That represents an investment in our community of over $37 million. Again, that's not adjusted for inflation, those are historical costs. We have about 250 street cut permits that we permit over, over this network of roads annually, on average. So that's about the magnitude that we're facing with our right-of-way excavation. Another note, currently, we're paving about four and a half miles annually of those streets based on our, on our budgets. Now, when I, when we decided we want to talk about this to you, we get questions about streets and street cuts over time, and some of those I just put down here because if I get, if I'm getting a question from the public, it might be a question that you guys may have. So I've just identified the, a few of these. This doesn't represent all of them, but just some of the more common ones that we may get or that I have been asked. And the first of which is, why do we have street cuts? You know, we work hard to get a street paved and everything, and there's two primary reasons. The first of which is aging infrastructure. Materials have changed over time. Recently, BGMU did a project replacing one of the first sewer lines put in Bowling Green, and that was an alley off of Main Street. They showed me some footage of that line. The line was collapsed. I don't know how it was still functioning, but they had to go in and replace that line. Another big initiative that's going on is with the gas company. Back in the day, bare steel line was commonly used. And this, over time, corrodes, and if we're having a flammable gas going through this, potential for safety problems issue. So that infrastructure ages, and over time, it needs to be replaced. Development also causes the need for this. Upsizing lines, or when, a prime example would be with some of the TIF development. Ballpark goes in, our restaurants are, what have you. We've got to get water, sewer, gas, electric cable, what have you, various infrastructures to make those facilities work. What changes did we make in the last revision? Again, as mentioned, that was in 2012. We made revisions in two areas, one of which was in our ordinance and in our drawing, our standard details. With the ordinance, we provided a performance standard, a measure of roughness of what is acceptable. Note, we have had several streets that we've had people tear out, work that they have done that didn't meet the standard, and we have a few others in the queue waiting to be replaced. So that has given us the tool to make, make that happen. We applied a warranty period of five years. We also put a repair duration in the ordinance of 10 days. In our performance standard, our repair standards, we included a winter detail. And the need for us to do that is the hot mix asphalt is not available during the winter months. So we provided means of doing a repair. It's a temporary detail, it's a two-step process, but we do get asphalt on the ground. It's a cold mix, combination of concrete and cold mix that is then fixed in the spring as the hot mix asphalt becomes available. What kind of coordination takes place between the city and utility companies? I didn't get this quite a bit. And there are several areas in which we do this. First of which is, before we bring a recommendation of an overlay project to you guys, we're talking to utility companies and trying to find out when they have projects scheduled. They may have a project scheduled in an area a year later. We're proposing it this year, so we may adjust. They may move a project up, we may move ours back to meet their schedule. It's never desirable us to expend city money, get a good street, and shortly thereafter, the street gets cut by a utility company. It has happened in the past, and it's something that, you know, it's just not a good situation. So we spent a lot of time there. We were planning this stuff out in advance. We also have a coordination map. BGMU hosts this, where we go in and we put our projects that are planned on this map. So we can look at any time where a gas company has a project or the utility, or BGMU may have a project to aid in that planning. And last, I've got a note here, despite our best efforts, we do work hard at this planning, but break happens or something, somebody might have to get into a street that has been paved. It's, if we have a utility break, we've got to make a repair. So you might ask what happens in that event. In our ordinance, we have a provision that requires utility company or contractor to do extra work if a street has been paved within two years and they have to cut the street. There's two options for this. Thermal bonding, an example of this was on Cabell right off the bypass near the power plant where this thermal bonding technology was used. It's a set of heaters that go down over the asphalt, more or less melts all the asphalt together and makes it more or less one piece as opposed to a cold edge matched up to another cold edge that can let water penetrate through. And last, there is another option that they repave the area of their impact plus 100 foot of either side is another option that we have if a street gets cut that we have paved within two years' time. Repair details, some of these changes we had made, so I'm reporting those to you. The first of which, you'll see, I've noted this with the square around it, you'll see revised and added as I go through the next few slides. We have eliminated one backfill material. We had removed 57 stone backfill, and we have added dense graded, DGA, dense graded aggregate. One thing we have done, we have limited how that goes in, and this has to go in layers, and it's very thin layers that are compacted in each layer. So that is a change that we have made. The other change that we've made, we've gone back to requiring concrete under our patches. We had eliminated this last go-around, and I think we've had some performance impacts due to that. So we, this is how we used to do that, and so I think this is a better repair and we've gone back to this. Again, we're putting a six-inch layer of concrete, one inch below the riding surface, and there, we're coming back with a one-inch layer of surface over the top of that. Got a few pictures of this, where you can see this is concrete that has gone in, the one-inch lip, waiting for the asphalt to come back in over it, and this is a picture of a final product using that same repair.
Jeff, may I ask you?
Yes, sir, certainly.
What happens, I'm not, obviously, I'm not concerned with street cuts, but I am the way, I am concerned with the way that some of them have been left. And we've talked about this many times.
Yes.
What happens when the street cut and it's been repaired and then it settles? I don't know what the terminology is, but it settles, then you've got like a, or those rumpel strips that we don't have anymore. It's almost like that. And we've used College as a prime example of that.
Okay.
And what has happened, based off of permits since this last go-around, we've got that performance standard where we can measure the deflection. Some, it's going to deflect to some extent. It's just going to happen, but there is an acceptable amount.
Do you all wait for a citizen complaint or someone to bring it to your attention? Or are these monitored after a certain period of time?
We check them at intervals. Usually, we're going out 180 days. Most of the time, if it's very bad construction, let's just use that as an example, I'm not saying that's the case, but if we're having defects, we're going to see those early. Now, in some of our deeper cuts, where we have a lot of backfill that goes in, some of those can take time for settlement to take place. I think our five-year warranty helps protect us on that. And how do we address that? If we get a citizen call, yeah, we're going to go out and look if we see it. So all of the above on notification of that.
But we don't check it after 180 days. Like, three years later, do we go back and check it?
Typically, that's going to be if we notice something.
Or somebody calls.
That's how we've done that in the past. And we'll get calls, we'll go out and take a look. Some of them, if they predate this program, we're going to fix. An example being out on College Street, some of that was older, some of that was done with another project, but our crews came in and made repairs. We've done work over in Ironwood where we've gone in and repaired some of the old street cuts.
Yeah, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
What happens if you've got a cut, in this particular example, let's say it's not a large cut? You put your dense grade in, you tamp it down and so on. Do you put concrete on top of the dense grade, then blacktop?
Yes, sir. Let me, and this is, this is detail I would need to show you on. This line here would represent the trench, where the backhoe is dug out to put the line in. This is the winter method, but I can still show you with this. That's backfilled, compacted with the dense grade, as we've talked. The contractor has to go one foot out either side of the trench. And with this concrete, that provides two things. One, a bridge.
Right.
To bridge that, so if we do get some settlement. Also, sometimes these faces here get weakened with that excavation, and so that helps get, you know, we've got repair going back beyond that. Still kind of going back to that bridging effect. So, so we're doing that. We've got the dense grade, we've got this concrete, and then we're coming back with a layer of asphalt over it. The typical summer now with this winter repair method, we have two options. One, where this is how it is now, contractor can come in, put the cold mix asphalt in here. When the hot mix asphalt becomes available from the plant, they take that out and put the hot mix asphalt in on the top.
Is there different degrees, and if that's the proper terminology, of dense grade? Is, let me ask it this way. Does all dense grade have the same quantities or same moisture in it? And I'm trying to get to the point, if you put dense grade in and you wet it, it almost turns into concrete. You tap it, then you put your concrete on top of that. Are there different grades of dense grade?
The state spec manual has a standard gradation, so we can get a standard product that falls within an allowable variation. So how much of each size is of stone. Moisture will vary. And again, we could get it too moist, and we can't get compaction on it. Too dry, we can't. So there is an optimal area in there, and a lot of that we can see as that's compacting in the trench. What's about right? And you're absolutely right, this will set up very tight.
Right.
And I think that's going to improve what we've, what we've been seeing in this repair.
So you're saying the type of dense grade we're using now is different than what we've been using in the past?
One, one item that the, their last iteration allowed was 57 stone. So that's more of like a, for lack of a better term, gravel than a driveway.
Right.
A lot of uniform sizes, and the thought process with that is when that goes in the trench, it's more, it doesn't have the fines, and it's going to seek a full compaction when it goes in. What I'm saying, we, minimal compaction effort to make it achieve maximum density. I think part of the problem that we've had is with moisture in the soil coming in and allowing to enter into those voids with that backfill material where this dense grade is more, kind of like you say, set up as a concrete where that soil cannot migrate into the trench. So you're absolutely right, it can set up very tight, and that's why we're going back to that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
One of the problems we face, or at least what I've heard, is the use of cold mix during the winter that deteriorates over time, creating, for example, under method one, a one-inch drop because that cold mix will break up and depending on traffic very quickly. Why would we continue to use that when we can go with method two and have high concrete all the way up to the top?
We have done that to provide an option. There's advantages of both. And one thing that the state has started doing recently, and you may have noticed that on some of the streets, and we've proposing this in, as a winter repair only, is when you're coming in, bring the concrete all the way up to the driving surface. Good thing about that, it's a good patch, it's a one step you're done. It happens, you're out. Bad side of that, you've got these little concrete patches in the street, and from an aesthetic standpoint. From a performance standpoint, it's going to be very good, it's going to get the motors back on the street very quickly.
I don't know from my standpoint, that I'm so much interested in what's underneath or how it's done, I just want them smooth.
Yes, yes.
What do we have to do to keep inspection line going and so forth?
The rideability, I think, is what all of us want.
Right.
Whereas when we go over and, thank God, we've already taken care of College Street.
Yep.
The rideability coming up College Street now, I mean, is smooth as silk, and that's what everybody wants on, on the street.
Right.
Is good rideability, and whichever method that we have to use, the end result is good rideability.
And what I've seen with the state where this is done, and of course, preparing for this, I've been out looking at a lot of street cuts and looking what the state's done and what we've done, different areas. These turn out very, very smooth. It's easy to screed the concrete off flush with the riding surface. Again, the downside, it's a different appearance.
What about setup time?
Setup time, they use, and what we're using under street patches now is a high early concrete. So generally, in 24 hours, we're set up, ready to go.
So for instance, if this were, if you were repairing a cut on, let's say, US 31W bypass, then it's going, there's going to be a patch out there that's going to be wet and non-driveable for 24 hours.
No. They'll, they'll be plated, and what they'll do, they'll put the plate on, the next morning, they, or within the time, they're pulling the plates.
The steel sheets?
Yes.
Yeah. Jeff, if it's elective, why don't we just make it our policy to go with the winter repair method two, eliminating all the problem with the cold mix?
We can do that.
If, if the look is not important, rideability is more important, right?
Well, there's one neighborhood that the look is important, but I don't know about the rest of us. I'm comfortable with a smooth road.
Listen to you, most of the problem occurs when the temporary patch becomes a permanent patch after a number of months, and there's a period where that becomes problematic. And it seems like the concrete is a better fix that can always be skimcoated with paving later, but this temporary patching creates problems for us, I think.
It's, it's three trips. They have to touch this three times.
Yep.
They're putting this concrete section in. It has to cure up, so they're generally plating those at night. They're putting this, the cold mix, and again, we don't have hot mix, so that's our only choice.
Or concrete's your only choice. You can use concrete all the way up.
Well, with this method. Then, three months or so, four months, when the asphalt plants are open back up, they've got to dig that out, put the permanent repair back in. So, and we track those to make sure those get taken care of. But again, getting a street opened up faster to the public, that is a definitely way to do that, and that's what we're proposing in the winter.
Is there much cost difference?
Probably this would be cheaper from a labor standpoint. You've got a material that you're putting in, taking back out, so for the extra inch of concrete, I'm sure that would be cheaper. And again, we're proposing this in the winter, in a way we can get the repair back up and open back up to the public.
But if there's a gap of time, let's say these people out in front of College Street are removing product, putting it in the line, and that, part of that's done in April, and they leave a temporary patch in there for four months, this doesn't help. With the concrete, it's done.
Yes, and that's, there will be situations where they do have to re-access those lines sometimes. But for just, you know, that's a quick and easy way to make that.
Jeff, can I ask about that? If we're talking about like the gas line?
Yes, sir.
Replacement out here, you're calling that a winter repair method number one, where they temporarily patched it and then they're going to come back and do the smooth on it? Is that, is that a description?
I guess, you know, if this was something where we were doing, we're getting in, getting out, very quick project, this is definitely a very easy way to go, and it gets the thing completed very quickly.
Again, my interest isn't in so much all the detail, there's a smooth road, whatever we do.
With a smooth ride, let me add that for.
Would it be, and I agree with Bruce on that, I'm more interested in a smooth ride, but not, not just for the, for the, for the vehicles, but for motorcycles or bicycles?
If it smokes a car, it's going to be even.
Walking across, yeah, walking across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And some of them have been so bad that, I mean, they seem dangerous for, and not just comfort, but dangerous.
And again, also keep in mind, we do have that provision where we'll be out looking at them, and if they get out of that variation that we've allowed with a warranty period, we have the ability to make a contractor, utility to go back.
Did you look at Small House around 14th, 15th, or 13th?
That's one that is on the list for replacement, near the Church of Christ there, 14th, 15th, somewhere in that block, yes. That's one that we will have rework. It's very rough.
Well, bless you. Or I can stop going that way, I guess.
Yeah, I drive that one frequently, so that is one that we've had identified, and it's, utility, not scheduled.
It is, it's bad.
Yes, sir.
Just so I understand this correctly in my mind, repair method two, you use that. I'm driving down the street, I'm going to see blacktop on there, then I'm going to see a piece of concrete, correct? It's all going to be smooth?
Yes.
That sounds great, but I do believe we're going to have citizens that are not going to like that at all if it's in their neighborhoods, seeing pieces of concrete here, there, and everywhere. But whenever we go to that street or that road in the year we're doing 4.5 mile repaving, will that concrete then be covered up?
It will.
And it'll all look the same?
And there's two different methods that we'll use on that. If it's just a street with ditches on either side, typically, we're going to overlay that. That's going to be an inch and a half overlay, and it will go right over the top like that. If it's a curving gutter section? curving gutter section, quite often, we'll have to mill that to match the gutter. Milling machine will be able to go through this material.
You mentioned the cooperation and the prior planning that is being housed at BGMU. Are all the utilities participating on a regular basis with this planning process?
Pretty good, unless are there any, most of them are reporting projects.
The BGMU coordination?
Yes.
And she deals with that part more on the day-to-day, so.
I guess the exception to that, and we've kind of addressed that just this week, is Atmos, because their priorities, kind of like our priorities, change kind of frequently with this bare steel replacement project. I think their fiscal year is October, like the federal fiscal year, so they kind of shifted some things around. So they're updating their map now. And it's kind of fluid. But it's in front of all of us at any point in time we want to see it. So I guess the most critical thing is, before we pave a street, that we look at it and make sure that something didn't change from the last time we looked at it. Because right now, I think Atmos is probably one of the bigger agencies with the most projects at hand that could impact us. And they've been really good about kind of moving things around to help us get some streets moved up the list, they'll get in front of us. And College Street is one of those, actually.
The winter repair method is only used when the asphalt plants are down from December to through March, right?
Yes, sir.
But that's problematic for us still, unless we uphold the 10-day or close to the 10-day benchmark for them to put the permanent patch in it. You could have a temporary in there, it comes out, and let's say, April or May, and that doesn't get paved until August. The public is inconvenienced with this temporary patching, waiting for the paver to do the job. One of the things that Jeff and I talked about is, we want to make sure that this commission is interested in us being scrupulous in forcing these contractors, who the utility companies use, to repave, even if it's a small section, a temporary patch as quickly as possible, preferably within 10 days or some other negotiated. We've been given, I believe, I could be wrong, these paving contractors, courtesy of making it more convenient, I think, at sometime at the expense of the public. I don't know if you guys agree with that or not, but I think we need personally to be more scrupulous about forcing people to do this at our timetable.
Joe?
I concur with Kevin 100%. First of all, these paving contractors, or general contractors, whoever they are, they know that the paving company closes their system down at a certain time of the year. It doesn't have to be that it is freezing outside or just cold. The orders that they have coming in determines whether or not they can afford to be open with that very big system they have out there on the hill. All the contractors know that. So if we put a 10-day timeframe on them, they know that if they're not going to finish the job up until August or something, and they have an idea that that paving system out there, Scotty's, is going to close down in September, October, for the winter, they need to get on their butts and get out there and finish that project up. It'll make a difference who it is, whether it's Atmos, BGMU, or anyone else. This is the key, and the key is the timeframe. Kevin is right. They're working on our schedule, and us not working on them. If something needs to be paved, let's get it done.
I don't know if you guys agree with that or not. I think that's one of the central issues. Are we here to accommodate, or are we here to get the public's needs taken care of first?
We want our streets, and I'm speaking as Joe Denny, and you know I run my mouth a lot, we need to get the streets paved as soon as possible. And not because we're going to work with this guy, because he's got another project going at the same time, somewhere else, in another county, or whatever it is. We come first.
Yeah, I guess one of the goals we have was make sure Jeff and his staff doesn't get duplicate messages. One message is, we're here to cooperate with contractors, to have collaboration with the utility companies, that's one message. The other is to get our stuff done, so the public is not put out as quickly as possible.
And that they know, Kevin, that that word is coming from all of us.
That's why we're here, essentially.
No use calling any of us. This is how we need to have it done, to meet the needs of the citizens of Bowling Green. No questions asked.
Jeff has made painfully aware of my ignorance, because I don't know a lot about paving and projects, that 10 days is impossible. But maybe that should be exception rather than normal. That we want a 10-day period. For example, let's say you do part of a project, and you put a temporary patch in April. It might be more convenient for the paving contractor or utility to take five streets done in April, with five done in June and July, and pave them in August. But that whole April, May, June, and July, bump, 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 bump. I don't think you all want that. I don't think.
Well, our citizens don't want that.
Yeah. So in order to get that eliminated, we have to be, our needs upfront, and we have to be together that this needs to be done timely, and our staff is going to be enforcing that time limit.
And if that general contractor out there knows this is the policy, and he's got bonding, they'll do it.
I think Jeff's idea of using the concrete is a welcomed addition. I think it completes part of the whole we had in our strategy. The final part is, our, the city's citizens' needs are first.
Now.
Sir?
We've done all this, we've done all of that, we've got the street, the concrete that are paved. Now, staff-wise, eye evaluation of that project, how long and when does that take place before we give an approval?
Okay. We are holding, we hold a bond for a certain period. So we'll issue a bond release. And typically, that was done at 180 days. The way, we have triggered inspections, and we are adjusting this. I'll tell you, this is how we've done it in the past. At 7:14, 28, in 180 days, a lot could happen within that time. So we are working more. There's three main messages I want to bring out of this, of what we are proposing. One, to increase the amount of inspection and communication that we have with the utility companies. And so getting more people out in the field when this backfill's taking place, the better. Communication's two ways. Us, you know, we will do a good job of clearly defining what the rules are. But secondly, we need information back from the utility companies when they're doing the work, so we can make these inspections. So.
But I guess my question, and you may have said it, but let me make sure I understand. When they get ready for tampering, do we have somebody down there, after that is over with, to determine that it is the right, whatever the words would be?
That's what I'm telling you. We need to increase that amount of inspection, so we have somebody there while that's taking place.
Right. Okay.
Second, Kevin's hit on this, increased accountability by the contractor. So, you know, making these guys hit these dates. There might be some times where there's a legitimate reason why something may take longer. But again, by and large, we should be hitting these dates. And last, with these changes in our standards, I think we'll see some big improvement.
Well, if they're general contractors, you know, Scotty's contracting and paving, they pave at night. General contractors smaller than them can put concrete in at night and smooth things out.
You have one more slide to go. We'll see that in a second.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's, where the question here is on the permitting fees. I don't know that the 25 is a problem, but you talked about the criminal, right now, criminal offense.
We have criminal offense. Gene and I talked this over a little bit, and I guess there's advantages either way. The contractor, us having civil penalties, by and large, we're getting permits from the utility companies. They know to do that, that's standard. This is, I think of this more as the fly-by-nighter that may come in and dig the street up, and we may not know who they are or whatever. You know, if we do catch those people, again, I think that was the original intent by that in here. We are holding bonds on other utilities and that kind of stuff. If they're not following the proper steps, that is a problem for us, and we do intend to go after them.
I'm not much interested in being a criminal offense. Civil's enough for me, but.
I agree. Civil would be the way to go.
Gene, I don't, you'll talk pros and cons either way, or?
This one, like all the others, is more your call. I just, from Jeff and I talked, I thought this one, personally, I thought was more appropriate criminal, because I think we have more, maybe pull in district court than we will for code enforcement board. If I get a fine, I'm not sure what we'd want to lean, because some of the things we do with most of our civil penalties is get liens on property. I'm not sure exactly what we would lean in a situation like this. Hopefully, the bonds will pick up most of this. Of course, we may have some people come out, companies may come out and do it and fly at night without a bond, so we'll have some issues here. But, you know, that's your call. I think clearly, over the years, we've been moving more and more and more of our fines to civil versus criminal. I think this one, if I can't remember, was this a violation? I think it's a violation. I think there's no jail time. I think it's a violation fine. But, you know, we can put in whatever you all want to do.
It had a $1,000 fine, I believe. I don't think that's a violation, is it?
No, violation's 250, I think. But, you know, we can reduce it down to 250, make it a violation. Or we can make it a civil, which, you know, we'll do whatever you all want to do on this one. But, you know, this one I view a little bit more different than, you know, not mowing your yard and, you know, having garbage in your yard with companies like this. Most of the time, we're talking about companies that should know better. And as Jeff and I talked, I thought this one might be a little bit, you know, we still have, for example, occupational, it's still criminal, for people not painting our occupational. So I kind of view this one as more like that one. But again, whatever y'all's choices on this one, we'll be glad to do.
Yes, sir. One of the things I think would be most effective to get those who aren't complying with your needs, our needs, is to withhold the ability to do utility work underground if all the streets are, doesn't, do not meet standards. So we have a problematic cut. I don't think we should issue another permit until that's taken care of. That would stop this going around the city, have 15 cuts, and we're issuing new permits. So I don't know how we do that in this policy, but, I'm sorry.
That's about as strong a policy as you can have, but in an emergency situation, you know, what?
They'd be claiming everyone is an emergency, is what they'd be doing.
Yeah, but BGMU would not, you know, they'll be in compliance. I'm just trying to think of other issues.
There's other people out there. I guess we're here, I'm here, part of the reason to put this on the agenda, we want to have a new day. We want to get serious about this. To get serious, we've got to be first. We have to have the contractors and utility company know that the city's needs got to be first. And if this, if non-compliance keeps occurring, that utility company needs to get its contractor to take care of it.
I think we're comfortable with that.
My only comment is, whatever the penalty is, I want it to have some teeth in it. Because if it doesn't, they're not going to care. They'll just say it's just easier not to be compliant.
What Melinda said is exactly what I was thinking. I'm just wondering if you couldn't make it so much per day, to give them an incentive to get it done right now.
Liquidated damages.
I know you want this serious, that's so. You tell us. And we can come back with some ideas about how to go with the more serious enforcement element. I think Jeff has made a good idea here about the concrete, use of concrete. We are sending a message out that the city's first, I think, right? And we can come up with some kind of enforcement thing, if that would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate to increase the size of the bond? And I do agree, just for consensus here, I do agree that I would rather see this as civil rather than criminal. But can you do things like that? And I agree with what Melinda and Rick said, I want to have teeth in it. You know, we have so many things now that we have that are against our ordinances, and a lot of those aren't enforced, and I know why. But we need to get away from that as much as we can. If we have something that needs to be enforced, it needs to be some teeth in it.
Bill, to answer your question, it's $5 a square foot for impacted area.
Is that set by the state? Or do we set that?
We have set that, yes, sir. And that would, that's probably about status quo of what it would take to make a repair. So if we had to bring another contractor in to do that, we're probably about at par. Potentially, maybe slightly below, but we're pretty close.
Well, I was just trying to think of a way to, and I know you all talked about this a lot, but a way to put teeth in it. And most, I think most people want to comply. Those that don't, they should suffer some type of penalty. But again, I don't think it should be a criminal offense.
We have a retreat coming up in September, I believe. We could vet a solution for the retreat. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Jeff for putting a thought into this, and thank you, because we want to do a good job with this.
I understand, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Life. Any other questions? All right. We'll move right on then to the next item, which is the wrecker service agreement policy for the police department.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug's here to make some, lead some discussion about our current wrecker service agreement. As the commission may know, the police department at times uses various wrecker services in the community for towing, for police cases. And we have some disparate treatment between us, this agreement, and other recent ordinance. And I think Rick asked that we have a discussion about that a while ago, so today is the day. So Doug?
Mayor, commission, with your permission, I'd like to have a conversation about the longstanding wrecker service agreement that the police department has been using for many, many years. As the commission knows, the police department has a daily need to call our local tow truck service providers to assist the police department in moving vehicles off the road. And that typically is in the, in the event of a collision where cars need to be moved, or if there's a car that's broken down, and we're involved in a motor assist. There's many times when we need wrecker services to act as our agent and participate in that. And so we have done that for many, many years. Chief Walter may help me remember how long ago we even developed a wrecker service agreement. But it's been a long, long time that we've used this. And over the years, it's been modified to meet the changing needs of both the department and the wrecker services. The most recent iteration of the wrecker service agreement was in large part created by Gene with our input. If you read it, you'll see it's a lot of legalese about liability and that sort of thing. But what this, really, what the wrecker service agreement is really intended to do, is to be used as a tool to establish and govern a relationship with the local towing services to provide third-party towing services for the police department, where they act as our agent. And there's no money exchange between the city and the service as a product of this. Now, we'll talk about it a little later, where the city might also use our wrecker service for our own city business needs. And we're going to break that out and discuss that a little separately later. But really, what has driven the need for the discussion today, I believe, is we periodically review this wrecker service agreement primarily for the fees that we permit to be charged under this agreement. When the commission was considering legislation to govern a certain aspect of towing, we knew, or at least believed at that time, that there would be some fees established, or maximum fees established, as it were. or maximum fees established, as it were, in that, in that ordinance. And so in our review of the wrecker service agreement fees, we felt like that they were already a little out of line with what the market was demanding for, for those services. But because we, we didn't know at the time what the ordinance was going to contain, we held off on making any changes to the wrecker service agreement. Consequently, since the towing ordinance that governs the non-consensual private property tow is now in place, it does contain some language that, that deals with the fees that wrecker companies can tow, which, as you can imagine, generated some conversation among the towing services about what is the relative disparity between the fees that the ordinance permits versus the fees that the wrecker service agreement permits. And so it really generated a larger discussion. We wanted to talk about the fees, but really, it was a good opportunity for us to just sunshine the entire wrecker service agreement. I know that this particular issue has probably not been before this commission and maybe several commissions. And so we thought it was a good time just to bring it back up, to bring it in front of the commission, to make sure that we are all of one mind moving forward as we make any changes that we might want to make on the wrecker service agreement. And, and we don't want to, although I don't think there, there really is not a conflict between the ordinance and the wrecker service agreement. And the only nexus between the two, I think, that we see is the, is the fee structures. But we don't want to create an unintentional conflict either with the ordinance, or we don't want to create an unlevel playing field. And so we want you all to have some input in, in what the final product is going to look like. I think there are, there are really three issues that, that I would like to discuss. But the first question is going to be, do you all, I guess, have any questions or believe that the wrecker service agreement is not even the proper tool to, to create the relationship between the wrecker services and the city? It's, it's been working for years, but, and I think I know the answer, but I, but I ought to ask the question before we go on to reviewing all of the subcategories, because if you don't think this is the right tool we should be using, then we probably need to stop and regroup. If you think the wrecker service agreement is the appropriate tool, we just need to make some changes, then I'd like to talk about the, the three, I think, areas that are important to me, and then, and certainly you all may want to discuss other details as well. So is there any, is there anybody that disagrees that the wrecker service agreement is a, continues to be a useful tool for the city and the Bowling Green Police Department? Is there any, is there any disagreement or argument with that?
You mean, Doug, as far as our need as a police organization for them, or I'm a little confused?
Well, I think the need exists. I think, I think the question I'm asking is, the wrecker service agreement that we have in place today, is that the right tool to continue to use to, to govern this relationship between the city police and the wrecker services?
I think so.
This is a very narrow relationship between the wrecker services that we need on a daily basis to tow cars off of the road.
Well, in my opinion, yes. And added to that is that, as you know, as three of us up here has dealt with wreckers over the years, and I've been out there many nights by myself and a wrecker driver. My concern, and I haven't talked with any wrecker companies whatsoever. I would like for them to be compensated for their services, and I need to have them as a part of our police organization adequately. Now, if we are looking at fees here, and I'm on page...
Probably page four of the agreement.
I don't know what page I'm on. But anyhow, I'm on a page, towing fee guidelines, service requirements. If this has been the fee for several years, then like everything else in this world, these wrecker companies, they're underpaid.
And we agree with that.
And what gives them credibility, even though we're being, the fees may not be up to date, and I don't know what an appropriate fee would be, but here's the key for the wrecker drivers. People that know that John Doe Wrecker Company is on our list and on the state police towing list can't ask for any more credibility.
I agree with that.
And so...
And, and I think that'll be an issue we're going to talk about in a few minutes, because that's an important issue for us as well.
Sure it is.
But, but to answer your question, or to address your point, is we know these fees are out of line. The question is not, do they need to be changed? I think we all agree they need to be changed. The question is, where do we capitate those fees? Because we have a little more complicated fee structure than the ordinance for just capping the maximum fee for these private property, non-consensual toes. And so it's, it's a little more involved to talk about what that means in terms of the fee structure. But Glenn Bratcher, who's with us today, Captain Bratcher, stays in regular contact with the towing companies. He manages this, this program for us, and so he stays in touch, and they know that we know that the fees need to be changed.
Okay.
So, so nobody disagrees with that. Really, the question is, what do we change them to? And we're going to talk about the details of that, if you want. We want to talk about eligibility, because there's an occasionally, it pops up that we deny a wrecker service from participating, and it goes back to that credibility issue. And we want to talk about why we do that, and the things that are important for us to use to vet those companies, because one of the issues that I have is, is they do become our agent. They become the agent of the police department and agent of the city. And, and I don't want to unintentionally or inadvertently put a, let me just cut to it. We don't want to put a criminal, somebody we know has the propensity to be engaged in criminal behavior, or we suspect that, to put them in a business arrangement through us. We don't want to be that, we don't want to be their resource to then potentially perpetrate a crime on one of our citizens, that we've been a part of putting them, creating that relationship, if you will. That's why it's incredibly important that we vet the companies very, very well. And I, and I put it in these terms, and I don't want to, I don't want to overexaggerate. We would all agree, I think, we don't want somebody that we know that is a sex offender that is, certainly has the right to drive a tow truck. We're not saying they don't have the right. But we don't want a sex offender in a tow truck to do toes for the Bowling Green Police Department, because we may have a young lady get into that tow truck to take their car down to the, to the car repair shop, and we don't, we just don't feel comfortable with that. And we don't want to put them in a bad position, and we don't want to put us in a bad position. That's why it's important for us to govern that relationship fairly closely. And we've had some, some towing companies that we've denied for just cause, in our minds, that have complained and, and think that we're being unreasonable in our guidelines. I would argue that we're completely reasonable, because I don't know that we have an obligation to give every tow company an opportunity to tow for us. I think this is a, a different situation. So we're, we're only comfortable doing business with companies that we feel comfortable having to do business with our citizens on our behalf. The other issue, the third issue really is, currently under this wrecker service agreement, if the police department has a car towed, let's say we, we're going to impound a car for evidence, and we call one of these wrecker services, they will tow at this fee structure, whatever the fee structure says, and that's what they'll bill us. And I don't know if that's a good deal or a bad deal. What I do know is, city service, the fleet that takes care of our cars, they don't have an agreement. They just call a towing company as needed to tow our police cars, or to tow, to tow any city vehicle that breaks down.
In order off of the police list, or any record?
They can call any record they wanted to.
Oh, okay.
And, and here's the, I guess the similar issue there is, we don't, the city doesn't have an agreed upon, or a contractual agreement that governs wrecker fees when, when the city's asking them to tow a car for the city. And so the question will be, do we want to break that out of this agreement so that the city can, can contract with a provider so that we can guarantee our own fees? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, and so I think the real question is, right now, we're, we're telling the wrecker companies what they can charge us. And if we raise these fees to whatever, let's say it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, then we're telling the wrecker companies, you can charge the city a hundred and twenty-five dollars to tow the car. Well, we think we can get a better deal contractually if we do an RFP, or if we do some other sort of contract where we can negotiate a lower price than what we may permit under this agreement. Does that make sense?
Well, no, I'm confused.
I would think that that would be the, the job of the fleet division anyway.
And it may be. That, that certainly is, is part of this discussion, because we don't all...
Except for the part where we're impounding a vehicle for evidence that goes in a certain location.
Right. You're talking about two things here, Doug. You're talking about the fleet division when they have to tow a police car down to the lot.
Uh huh.
They can call any record.
They don't, they don't abide by our wrecker list. It doesn't mean anything to them.
Why shouldn't they? Is that the question you're asking?
No, the question is...
It would appear to me that if our street department is towing, or has to have towed one of our police cars, that they automatically would call one of the wreckers off the police list.
And, and we could, we could agree that that might be the route we need to take. But I guess my argument is, or my question is, if we're going to, if we're going to change the fee structure and raise the fees, do we want the, at least the option of negotiating a competitive rate for, for the service provided to the city? Just like any other contracted service to the city.
So you're saying, we put a request for a proposal out there, and John Doe Wrecker Company and Jane Doe Wrecker Company bids to the city of Bowling Green that I will tow all cars at the police request for this fee, and I'll tow all cars? No. What?
No, I think we're talking about two different things.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get figured out. What are we talking?
It is, and I, it is confusing, because we have bundled the two issues together in the wrecker service agreement. I think we're trying to unbundle it.
Let me, let me just turn it around and go in from another direction. I don't see the purpose, if I'm understanding and hearing things right, necessarily why we should contract or send out... What is wrong with the fees being whatever you decide they are, and still having a rotating list of the wreckers that we feel need to be on the police list?
There's nothing wrong with that. There's two different scenarios. We call the, we call wrecker service for a citizen to get their car out of the road. The citizen pays the fee, or their, their insurance company pays the fee. That, the city is out of that business transaction once we introduce them.
I understand.
The other, the other part of that is, the city has a business relationship with the tow company where they're towing for us, and we pay a fee. Right now, all of those fees are governed by one document. I'm just asking, do we want to continue to do that and have all of the city towing services governed by this document? Or do we want to segregate that and have a contract with a, with a, with a towing company to do all the city for this, not, not for the citizen at the city's request, but for the city where the police car breaks down, or a parked car breaks down, or a fire truck needs towing? You know, the, the two different issues. We're, we're the one needing the service versus the citizens the ones needing the service. Does that make sense?
Well, to an extent, but...
We could do it all with this.
If it's a ten forty-five out there, and I go to the scene, and the car's got to be towed, I'm going to ask that person, do you have a preference of a wrecker to come and tow your car?
I may or may not ask him that question.
But they should, shouldn't they?
Depends on the, depends on the facts.
Yes. And I say, yeah, I want Joe Denny's wrecker company to come and tow my car. I go to my radio and send Joe Denny that request of so-and-so. Now, if it's another ten forty-five, same ten forty-five, and that person said, no, I have no preference, then I go to my radio, send me next on the list at this address. The other side you're saying is, is that fleet, if your, my cruiser breaks down, they can call any wrecker company that is not on the police list? Because I'm a buddy of so-and-so coming to pick this... No, I don't like that. Anybody that is in the city government of Bowling Green should call the wrecker that's on your list. We know who we're dealing with. They've already been screened. They're coming to get my cruiser to tow down on Raven Street. I know my shotgun and everything I got in my car is okay, because that wrecker company is on our list.
And we're, we're absolutely fine with doing that. The only issue that, that really is, is in question is, we're going to establish the fees that we're going to allow them to charge us.
And what, let's, let's get to that part of it. On the fee part structure, what, what do you recommend?
Well, I, somebody's going to have to remind me what the maximum fee is under our, our towing ordinance, but there has been some discussion. What you'll look at on, on page four, under the towing fee guidelines, we have, we have two different storage fees, an indoor and an outdoor, indoor being more expensive than outdoor. And then we have two different wrecker fees, one being sort of business hours and one being after business hours. And then the third fee, set of fees we have is what are called dry runs, because what happens is, in particular on cars that are broken down, people can't get their car started, they're, they're blocking traffic, they're in the road, we call a wrecker, before the wrecker gets there...
They go.
Well, they get their car started. And so we don't, we don't want to, to hurt the businessman's business, because they're not going to get a tow out of that, but they should get something. We feel like that the dry run is when they're no longer needed, but they've arrived on scene, and they're, they're, they're not going to have to tow a car. But in, in all rights, we think they should deserve something.
Does the citizen still pay that?
It's the citizen's responsibility to do that.
So you're not recommending anything?
Well, I, I didn't come with recommendations, only because I wanted this to be a discussion on what you're comfortable with. There is a fee established in ordinance that is a maximum fee for towing. I think that needs to be considered as part of where we ultimately wind up with this.
Why would we want to establish fees that we, the city of Bowling Green, are going to pay? I mean, I understand to get in line with our towing ordinance, but aren't we doing, I said, disservice? Aren't we better off asking for an RFP? Someone may come out and say, I want all of city's business, and I'm willing to do it for less than all these fees we have listed.
That was, that was the question. That was one of the questions. If you divide, if you divide the question, one is, what does the city pay for the service?
Right.
Versus what is the maximum we're going... To establish a fee at all, we could, we could do away with the fees altogether. But to establish, the reason this agreement has a fee established at all is to protect the citizen from gouging. Because we don't want an unscrupulous tow truck company to overcharge, that we've seen, we've seen some tow truck companies overcharge for their services if, if given the opportunity. We want to govern that, and we don't want the citizen to be gouged. And so that's why we have the fee structure at all.
So you're saying that anyone that's got a wrecker service, we send a request for a proposal to all wrecker service companies?
They're, they're still going to, I would recommend they still meet our guidelines. They're not going to, we can't just do business with anybody. They're still going to have to meet certain guidelines that we're comfortable with, to include some of that criminal issues and, you know...
I would think the RFP needs to go to those that are on this list that are okayed already by the police department. But it would give the city... But it would give the city an opportunity to negotiate a rate through Fleet that would be sustainable and guaranteed to tow city-owned vehicles, which is different than what we're talking about here.
Right. But I need that, I need that fee structure, that RFP, to also cover vehicles that I need towed in for evidence that are owned by somebody else, not just city vehicles. You know, if we're going to have it towed for the city, that's what I'm talking about.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yes, sir.
Let me see if I understand this. You are interested in having some kind of vetting process for anybody who tows either our vehicles or on behalf of our name? That's a yes.
And we have that now.
Okay. Melinda and others are suggesting, yes, that's a good idea, but we should make that competitive and go out to an RFP to say, if you're willing to meet our vetting requirements, we will take the lowest, lowest and best bidder. And for us and for...
I don't, I don't think we should apply that to the general towing services. I don't, I don't think we want to give all of the city's business to one towing company. If we're calling on behalf of the citizen, I don't want...
Why not?
Right now, we give, right now, we give, let's say, 10, I don't know what the real number is, 10 or 12 companies, an opportunity to tow for the citizens. Okay? If you're involved in a wreck, you've got, you've got an equal chance of getting one of 10 towing companies on our list.
Yep.
So, we, we divide the pie evenly when it's not city business.
Why would we not want to get the best price for the citizens?
Seems a lot of work, too.
Well, first of all, yes, I'm not sure any towing company could do that, could meet the demand of towing for us exclusively, because we demand them all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Not in Bowling Green.
But, but, but I will also say, I'm not sure we can give them the volume of business they need to stay in business, but they have to meet our demand. So, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's attractive. To be honest with you, you'd have to ask a towing company if that's an attractive offer to be an exclusive service provider for the city.
If I was a wrecker company, I would, I wouldn't bid just on, bid for city business. I'd take my chances on being on a rotating basis, putting my wrecker on a rotating basis. Just like all wrecker, all, I've never heard, and it may be, I'm sure it is, somewhere or another, where the wrecker companies for police agencies and the other two guys that's been on police, they may have, on a, unless it's maybe in a great big city, New York, Boston, or someplace. If I was a wrecker company, put me on a rotating basis.
I think we do this for the convenience of the citizen without putting the wrecker services at a competitive disadvantage.
Because if I get on the list, and there's a request for a proposal, and I get it, I got to buy additional equipment, additional wreckers, in order to meet that need, and I don't think it's company around here can do.
Well, and here's the other side of our demand. If you can't, if you can't meet our, let's, let's say all of your tow trucks are busy, and you, we've got a 30-minute requirement to get to the scene. Right now, if you're on a rotating list, you can pass. You can, you can go, thank you, but no, thank you. Your name goes to the bottom of the list, you come back up again later. If you're going to make that same demand for only one wrecker service, I don't know that they're going to be able to meet that demand and still do other business.
Suppose there's a wreck out on I-65, and there's 10 cars, and I've got to request for the city of Bowling Green, hey, I'm going out on the interstate. I'm not going to worry about one little, little car over here on 15th Street that stopped, broke down, and you're calling me? I'm going out on interstate with my great big wrecker that I get, serve $100 an hour for it being out there.
So, let's, let's narrow it down to the choices.
Yeah, I didn't mean for it to obviously become this complicated.
And I think that's what it is. It's getting complicated. What I envisioned for us to do was not to change our process of what we're doing now. I want those wrecker services that are called by the police department to show up at an accident scene, to pass the vetting of the police department. I think that's important. I think we need to set maximum allowable towing charges for those services. But then again, there's that opportunity to pull the city, the city's business out of this agreement, and to make that a competitive opportunity for towing services. Send the RFP out to everybody, decide on what we would be willing to pay, and say, are you willing to do that? If so, we would like to include you on the rotation for that.
It probably should be bid anyway.
To make it legal.
Yeah, I don't know if it goes over 20 grand, but yearwide, but it probably righteousness demands that it be competitive, probably.
I, I don't see us changing the way we're doing things now. That was never the intent. The intent was to get these prices more in line with what is, is being charged in today's economy.
So, you're saying that we should have sent out a request for a proposal to all the wrecker companies, for them to be obligated contractually to do all the city towing? Is that what you're saying?
No. What I'm saying is, we're, all we're going to do is, is update our pricing policies on what we're doing now.
Right, okay.
And then, pull, pull as a separate item, towing on behalf of the city, and allowing those wrecker companies that are approved by the police department to tow for the city at, at charges that we agree to, and do it also on a rotational basis.
Well, what is the problem? I thought that's what I was saying, the same thing. What is the problem? I thought we said something about requests for proposals. In the voice, it's still the same. If I have a wreck out here, and I want Walker Wrecker Company to come tow my car, then that's my business. If there's a wreck out there, and a person, the police asks that person, what wrecker do you want to come? They say, don't care, next on the list is Walker Wrecker Company. What's the difference? Apparently, I'm not understanding, by the way.
I'm sorry. I think I'm totally confused now. I'll just admit it.
I'm getting that way, too.
Let's start over again, and with the three items. You want to know what to charge for the maximum price.
There's a, there's a fee structure, the, this fee structure's more complicated. We've got to look at a number of different things.
Present us with the recommendation. Second item is on towing for the city's fleet purchases and the city's evidential, evidentiary amount.
That's not my second item, but if you want to talk about that, that's fine.
Yeah. We're, we want an RFP on that part of it, is that correct? To get the best price for the city?
I can handle that part.
Okay. The third item is what?
It, it can't be, somebody mentioned a rotational basis. I don't know that you can do an RFP. They expect a contract at the end of an RFP. I don't think you can rotate that service.
I understand. Go ahead. What was the second item?
Does anybody have any concerns about the eligibility standard, the measure that we use to say yes or no to these towing services?
No, I don't. Do what you've been doing.
Then, then, then that's, that's a good issue with us. So, if I understand it right, you want a recommendation from me on the fee structure, on all the, on the six different fees that we charge? Because what I will also tell you is, we recognize that there's some things that we can't reasonably attach a fee to. If we've got a car in a ravine, and it takes...
You've covered that in the contract.
Right. I just want you all to know that we're not going to try to attach a fee to extraordinary circumstances. We're going to, we're probably going to let them charge what they think is reasonable based on that service. But again, the fee structure, we can use a fee structure very similar to the maximum amount that you all have already established in ordinance, which was the beginning of, really, the discussion several months ago, was which agreement establishes the maximum fee? Is it the police agreement that establishes the... I know what it is now, but previous to the, to the ordinance, we were in discussions behind the scenes, was going, who's going to, who's going to set the rate? Is ordinance going to set the rate for maximum, or is the, or are they completely separate, and we'll set a different...
We're giving, we're giving you a direction here, though. Go ahead.
Where I'm so confused, we keep talking fees. The fees that are listed in the wrecker service agreement, who pays these fees? If I'm in a wreck...
Citizen.
Or your insurance company.
Okay. So, that's where I'm confused. So, you're saying this is the max, as it is right now?
These aren't the maxes, these are the only fees.
The only fees?
Yeah.
That, that tow company can do. But if I was just out stranded, police aren't involved, and I called that tow company?
You'd be charged a completely different rate.
Okay.
Yes.
So, these fees, you call on behalf of the citizen, that cost is going on to the city, citizen, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Then, we're also discussing fees, fees that the city of Bowling Green would pay if any of their vehicles...
You can call that our company.
Yes. Okay. See, that's where I was getting confused. I felt like we were trying to look at all the fees.
Right now, we're doing both under this agreement. We're setting the, we're setting our own fees for what we pay, and we're just trying to decide if that needs to be bifurcated and have two different issues.
Are you comfortable with, with letting him make a recommendation on the fees?
Yes.
Keeping the same kind of vetting status that we have, and then going for an RFP for exclusive contract for the city?
I have one point to that, for our company bidding, I think it's correct that we should, those who are going to do city's work be vetted.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But that needs to be a part of the RFP process, and not based upon what the police department wants. That should be part of the...
I'll come up with some, I'll talk to Doug.
You see what I mean, the difference?
Yeah, yeah. The offering has to go to everybody.
We shouldn't put Doug in a position of deciding who we get an RFP. We should have those, we should have those qualifications in the RFP.
Yeah, I would do that correctly. But still, lowest and best.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Everybody clear?
Well, I really like it, because I'm afraid if you don't do these for the companies that you all are, then they may go to the other way and start towing that way to get the higher fees.
Right. Then, tell me how you all would like this. I'm happy, I'm not prepared to give you numbers today, and we need to have some discussion. We want to be fair.
Talk with Mr. DeFabo, and he'll distribute it to us.
We want to be fair to the towing companies, but we certainly want to be fair to the citizens, and we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that price is appropriate.
Our goal would be by the next commission meeting, to have those in a municipal order get approved. Is that cool? Is that good?
Anything else from the commission?
On other initiatives, or on this?
Either one.
Nothing on this.
Great job. Thank you.
Go ahead.
On other initiatives, and I've had a number of people ask me about the, when will the staff bring forward the issue with the Socrate fee?
Brent was away for two weeks at SEI. It looks as if we are probably going to be looking at retreat to do a full bidding, or we could have a separate meeting for that. We need to get back on it. We haven't been on it.
And that's my point, we just need to get back on it.
And it took two weeks out of the time?
And one more, the Covington...
If you tell me, if you guys want it in 10 days, we'll close the thing. I thought it could be a major item of our retreat.
One other thing, the cemetery, I was at an event, the cemetery, the Covington Cemetery?
Yes.
Where are we on that?
I don't, I don't know. Brent was out there today, and he texted me, and I had another question, he said, I'm at the cemetery, but I, if you give me a day, I can have my answer for it.
I knew they were going to be there, and I would like just occasional update, because citizens see us pass these things.
Right.
Then, it's months before actions start to take place, and I think our citizens would like to know.
We have closed, and we received the check from Mr. Covington. I don't know if you knew that or not, but we have done that.
No, good. Thank you.
So, maybe that's why Brent was out the cemetery. So, the first step was, I guess, the exchange of money, right, Gino? The exchange of money finally occurred, and so, now, the other part of that process could start.
It's taking, yeah, it's actually getting the city involved in doing the cleanup. But we have closed on the acquisition, and Mr. Covington has given us his check, and it's been given to, Jeff's got the debt check, so...
Great, thank you.
But I'll, I'll get a thorough answer for you.
All right. Thank you. We'll return at 7 o'clock for a regular meeting. Thanks for attending.
We have the executive session, too. Everybody get the memo.